Okay, everyone. Whenever you're ready, just take three deep breaths down into the body. And again, let's see if we can breathe in just a little bit more. Going to inhale. And exhale. Breathing in. And breathe out. And right now, we're just kind of welcoming in the breath. We're letting the body. Letting your mind, we're letting your body know that we're just going to take a full hour to just breathe. And we ask the body to just gently release whatever, whatever it's storing, whatever it's hanging on to. So then you could feel better by the end of the session. Okay. It's gonna do great. All right, whenever you're ready, just breathe right along with me. So we're going to inhale. And soft exhale. We breathe in. And breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. Breathe in. Breathe out. And during this part of the session, it's your choice if you'd like to breathe in through the nose or the mouth. Do whatever feels good for you in the first part of this session. And we're going to breathe in. And breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. You're doing great. Inhale. And exhale. And for those of you who've done this before, you know the drill. I want you to get right into the breathing. So you're going to relax your jaw, let it soften. And for those of you who've been here before, keep the breath going. So this is the breath pattern. In through the mouth, out through the mouth. In. Those, that's for those of you who have done this before. And those of you who are new, we're just going to really gently ease into this. And just take your time. Again, breathing in through the nose or through the mouth, whatever feels good for you. We're just warming up the body. You're doing great. Inhale. And exhale. And as you can feel, the body may start to warm up. It may start to get a little cold. You may start to feel a little dizzy. That's part of the session. Just know you're safe. And you're going to breathe in. And breathe out. Just taking it one breath at a time. You're doing great. Yeah. And don't worry about it. By the end of the session, you're going to be able to breathe all the way down into your body. You're going to be able to really open up your chest and your belly. And you'll feel every cell in the body by the time we're done. But for right now, because a lot of us are going through so much stress, because a lot of us are holding our breath so much, it might not be easy to take a deep breath in. So let's slow the breath down a little bit. And see if you can inhale 20 to 30% more on the breath in. And this is a very soft breath. And see if you can feel your whole body, even if you can't do it quite yet. See if you can expand the whole body with your breath in. Yeah, and it's okay. If you get fidgety. I'm already starting to get really warm. So grab a sip of water if you need to. But keep the breath gently moving through the body. And don't be scared. Don't be scared of your breath. Don't be scared of your power. Breathe in. And exhale. Inhale. And exhale. If it's too much, ease off a little bit, take a sip of water. And then come back into it when you're ready. You're doing great. Trust me, this is not easy. And if you're starting to feel activated, you're actually right where you're supposed to be. This doesn't really feel good at first. For most people, this is pretty triggering. So let yourself feel activated. Let yourself feel however you're feeling. Just know the breath is going down through the body. It's gently helping to gently detox your organs, any worries, fears, or doubts. And let's take three deeper breaths down through the body. And exhale, just letting it go. Inhale. And exhale. You're doing great. This part of the session, you may start to get a little headachy, sinuses, dizzy. And just take another three slower, deeper breaths. Inhale. And exhale. Breathing in. And breathing out. You're doing great. Keep it going. Breathe in. Breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. Breathe in. And out. And as you breathe, try to have it sound like an ocean, like a really gentle wave coming into the shore. And then the tide goes back out. The tide comes in. And the tide goes back out. And continue to breathe while I speak. So let's say you have a hard time speaking up. Let's say you have a hard time speaking up in the moment. Or speaking what you need. So your throat might feel really activated or closed. Or your chest. Like, let's say you have anxiety also. And you carry it in the chest. So in the throat, in the chest, if you're feeling activated, take three deeper breaths. And imagine opening up your throat, your throat chakra. Just really gentle. You don't, we don't, we don't want to force the breath. You're just taking a nice big breath in and then letting it go. And wherever you're feeling activated in the body, you want to send your breath because all the love, all the support, all the strength that you need is in your breath. So don't be afraid to pull it in. Use the power of your inhale to open up the body symptoms. So it's safer for you to speak your truth, to let go of the fear and know that it's going to be okay. It's safe to trust the process. And you know, a lot of our organs, they carry anger, stress, worry, sadness, fear. Many other symptoms or emotions. So wherever you feel the most activated in the body, again, let's invite three really loving, supportive breaths right into your organs, wherever you need that love and support. Beautiful. And the more you can breathe in, even if it's hard to breathe in, the more you can just really just start to crackle through the heaviness or the tension. See if there's any cracks in there that you can open up more with your breath. The freer and the better you're going to feel by the time we're done. And we inhale. Exhale. Exhale. And as a loving reminder, through your journey, through your process, every day here on planet Earth, let's just ease off the pressure. And try to be as loving and as kind on yourself as possible through these times. We're all trying to juggle all the layers that are being thrown at us each day. So if you can, just let yourself sink into your body. And if you would like to place one hand on your heart, one hand on your belly, and breathe in. And breathe out. Inhale. And exhale. And just, this is your time for you right now. Okay? Breathing in. Breathe out. Inhale. And exhale. You're doing great. Breathe in. And breathe out. And with each breath that you take, you matter. You matter. And with each breath that you breathe, you are loved, you are supported. And with each breath that you take, you don't need to know everything right now. Just ease off the pressure. And just focus your attention, the best that you can, on your inhale. And exhale. And let's say it's hard to focus right now. That's okay. We actually don't want you to focus. We just want you to breathe. And let your mind go where it goes. But if you can't, let's say the mind goes off this way or goes off that way. Okay? Now pull yourself back in with your breath in. And exhale. And then the mind goes this or that way. And then again, pull yourself back in with your breath. And exhale. You're doing great. Let the mind, let the body go wherever it goes. Notice what your body's doing. Just kind of observe it. Are you getting hot? Are you getting tingly? Are you getting cold? Do you know how safe you are? Do you know how protected you are through these times? You are safe, you are loved, you are protected. And we're going to take three deeper breaths in down through the body. With each breath that I breathe, it's safe for me to trust that it's all going to be okay. I either have the choice to keep worrying or dwelling on things, or keep staying in the stress, or I have the choice of finding my breath to help me through. And we breathe in. And breathe out. And just notice while we're in the session, notice what your thoughts are saying to you. Notice if they are loving or if they aren't very supportive. Like, if you're new, sometimes people will be like, oh, I'm not doing it right. It's not enough. I'm not breathing deep enough. No, trust me. Ease off the pressure. I'm sure you're doing a fantastic job. We're just taking it one breath at a time. So we're just kind of noticing our thoughts, noticing our feelings. And just keep pulling in that breath. And just being as loving and as gentle on yourself through this process. You're doing so good. And it does take a few minutes for the mind and body to really like relax and let go. So you can enjoy the ride. So just give yourself some time. It's okay. Let yourself do what you gotta do. And keep coming back to the breath. I'm doing the best I can, and it's more than enough. Everything that I'm doing is more than enough. With each breath that I breathe, I'm right where I need to be. Okay, and remember in the beginning when I shared, there's going to be a part of the session where you don't want it to keep going. It can be so uncomfortable sometimes being in our bodies and being in still for a moment. So just blast through whatever you're feeling, big breath in. Just be really gentle. You're doing great. Yeah, this isn't easy. But we're in this together and you're doing great. We're just taking it one breath at a time. Let yourself fidget. Let yourself say what you need to say. And I feel like enough people are activated right now. I feel like now's a good time for us to do the speaking process. So what I would love for you to do is take three deep breaths down into the body. And open up the sensations that are going on. Pull the breath in. Don't be afraid. Like, pretend like you've done this a million times before, you know? Just don't be afraid to pull the breath in and really open up the body. And I know, like, the sensations might feel more intense. Ooh. Maybe I'm pushing you too hard. I just got really dizzy. Hold on. Yeah. Take a sip of water if you need to. Okay, we're going to speak out what's going on. Okay? And you're muted. So no one's going to hear. No one's going to hear what you speak out. And you know what? Let's slow the breath down just a little more. There's like a really overwhelmed dizziness coming through. So um just know you're safe. It's passing. Okay. And everyone, repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak. What they're really trying to say is and I want you to speak out the first thing that comes to you. And again, really slow the breath down. I don't know who just got really, really dizzy. But hopefully it cleared. I almost had vertigo for way longer than I needed to. But what I did was I sank into the sensation or the feeling. I slowed my breath down. So slow the breath. And just know that you are totally safe. You are loved, you are supported. Sometimes people can feel nauseous when they do this, just a little bit. And that's just your body, just letting go of some toxins. And if, for those of you who got your answer, if you'd like to share in the chat box, you're more than welcome. And um I'll give you an example. So when I asked, so keep, keep the breath going while I speak. You're doing great, by the way. When I asked my body or the feelings, when I asked the feelings or sensations, if they could speak, they really wanted to say was um they wanted me to ease off the pressure. That's the first, first hit I got. So um you know, maybe, maybe I'm too hard on myself. Maybe I'm pushing too much. And so, and as soon as I, I said that, that's when I got dizzy. Okay. So that, that's just an example. I'll give you another example. And again, so I feel like everyone's releasing right now. Or feeling something. So again, just find your breath. We're, we're just going to take our time. Okay? Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. And just now, as you breathe, your body is healing itself. You don't have to do anything. You just keep, keep connecting to your breath. It's going to take care of you. So someone just wrote, if the feeling or sensations in their body could speak, what it's trying to say is you are not alone. And leaning on my husband is okay. Yeah. So beautiful. You just, when you get the answer, pull it in with your breath. Thank you for sharing. Someone else wrote, if the feelings or sensations in their body could speak, what they're trying to say is grief and sorrow. Picturing back when I was working hospice care years ago. Yeah. Yeah. So then you just kind of pull the breath in. And people do get emotional when they do this type of breathing. So let the tears come through. It's part of the session. Great work. And I'm going to ask everyone another question. And the reason why we do this is as soon as you can speak out of the body, what you're seeing or feeling, it helps to dissolve the symptoms and make this a more enjoyable ride. So you're doing great. Grab a sip of water if you need to. Okay? And again, it's okay if you get fidgety. It's okay if you get cold. So if any of you are cold out there, um, it's just fear releasing from the body. So take three deeper breaths and warm your body up with your breath. Breathe a little bit deeper. Okay. Let's ask your body one more question. So breathe in. And breathe out. And repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak. What they want me to know is and I want you to speak out the first thing that comes to you. Okay. And if any of you would like to share in the chat, you're more than welcome to. It always helps and inspires others so then they can get through that process. Because sometimes it's just not easy sitting with the feelings or the sensations that are going on through the body. Right now, I'm kind of annoyed because since we started breathing, my throat's been clearing. It's really, there's just a lot of, you know, scratchy and you know, it's just clearing out and I need to like spit, you know? So it's kind of bothering me. But so what I'm going to do is I'm just going to keep breathing and opening up my throat. Yeah. And just keep, wherever you need that extra love and support right now, even if you're fidgety, just keep breathing through the fidgets. Like, what is it that's making you fidget? What's, what is it that's going on in your life? That's not, that's making you feel uneasy? And just keep breathing through it. Just ask yourself, you can ask yourself anything. Like, why do I feel this way right now? And then just speak it out. Beautiful. I love it. So someone wrote, if the feelings or sensations in their body could speak. But it's, what it wants them to know is I'm loved and protected. Yeah. And take three deeper breaths, pulling that in. Pull the breath in. Now, as a loving reminder, some of you might be feeling good. Some of you might not be feeling good right now. And it's just part of the session. You, you know, some, sometimes I get really annoyed and angry and bitter when I do breath work. Just helps break all that up in my body. And just keep it rocking. I promise. There's so many miracles on the other side of this. And you are safe and protected. And someone wrote that they're freezing. Yeah, again. So take three deeper breaths and open up your body and imagine warming your body up with that breath. And what you could say if you're cold right now. you could say if the cold, if the freezing in my body could speak, what it's trying to say is and then just speak it out. You got this. You're doing great, everyone. Someone just shared, if the feelings or sensations in their body could speak, what it's, what it wants me to know is time to let go of the past fully and completely. It's time. Beautiful. Yeah. Big breath in. Superwoman, Superman. Whatever. I always tell kids, take big Batman breaths. You know, don't be afraid of your breath and your power. And don't be afraid to let go. You got this. You already know what happens when we let go and surrender. Everything we want to, everything we want to happen for our lives comes in once we let go. You're doing great. Okay, here we go. Or Monica, what you can say is the reason I'm freezing is because the reason I'm freezing is because and then just speak it out of the body and just let yourself go there. Yeah. Great work, everyone. Yeah. And I, everyone who's on here, I just want you to imagine like you're a newborn baby. And you know, when a, when a newborn baby comes into the world, we're not hard on it. We're not, you know, we wrap it up. We just hold it and welcome it. And whisper and sing and hum and rock it back and forth. And we just give the baby exactly what it needs in the moment. And so I really want you to just be really extra tender on yourself right now. And imagine that you are like a newborn baby. Just really hold yourself. And with each breath that you breathe, just give yourself exactly what you need right now. That's right. You're not broken. There's nothing wrong with you. You're perfect just as you are. Just be really loving and kind. I love it. I love the answers that are coming in from people. It's beautiful. And this part of the session, it's just my loving reminders. You know, there might be slight headaches. I mean, your body is just gonna be doing tons of stuff. And you just keep breathing through. You got this. And I'll let you know when we're almost done. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Yeah. And sometimes when we do that speaking process, the sensations start to dissolve or they could change and go to somewhere else in the body or they intensify. So if that has happened for you, just know it is totally part of the session. I promise it's all gonna be okay. That means that your body's like, yes, they're finally breathing so we can let go of this stuff. So someone just wrote that they feel numb tingling through the whole body and it kind of feels scary for them. And is that normal? And yeah. So for those of you who are just rocking through and you've done this before, keep breathing while I speak. You know the rhythm, you know the pattern. For those of you who are experiencing a lot, just do this process with me if you'd like. So let's take a few slow, deep breaths and open up the tingling, open up the numbness. And I know it can feel scary. I promise you're safe. I'm, I'm here every step of the way. Some, you know, like if you feel like a panic coming on, just let yourself sink into it. You are safe. Okay? It does happen to a lot of people. So it is normal. It's gonna pass. And if you can, kind of sit back and observe it. And let's try send three really slow, loving breaths through the numbness, through the tingling, through your whole body. And repeat after me, I'm safe. I'm safe. It's gonna be okay. Okay? Even if it doesn't feel like it, okay? Even if you don't believe what I'm saying, it's passing. So just keep doing the best you can. If you're feeling the tingling all over, repeat after me. First, we take a big, deep breath in. And repeat after me. If the tingling all over my body could speak, what it's really wanting to say is and I want you to just speak it all out of your body. If you're feeling scared, if you're feeling out of control right now, if you feel like your life's out of control, absolutely. Um, you know, if you're feeling, just let, just speak out every emotion that the tingling is trying to say. And you're doing great. We're just taking it one breath at a time. Grab a sip of water, ease off the tension. There may be some of you who have tetany or your hands are kind of clamped. So sometimes if you've had, or if you personally have had a traumatic birth, this can activate your birth. So a lot of people have had traumatic births. So just take your time. It's okay to feel out of control. You're safe. Find your breath. You got this. Inhale. Exhale. The biggest thing right now, even if you don't want to, keep the breath going, just very soft. And for those of you who have tingling in the body, repeat after me. If the tingling all over my body could speak, what it's trying to show me is if the tingling in my body could speak, what it's really trying to show me is and this is the part of the session where you don't want to give up on yourself, okay? I know it's scary. Today was a big day. I had sessions earlier today and they're like, is this gonna get better? Because it's getting worse. And I'm like, yeah, I promise. Just take your time. Allow, like especially if we can, if we're, if we control a lot of things in our life, if you control a lot or if you control your emotions or what's happening, um, which we all do, it's normal, but this can really make you feel out of control. And you know, it's just, it's normal to not want to feel out of control. So I really want you to just sit back in your body, let yourself sink into the feelings or sensations. And I really want you to just let your body do its thing. Let it, let it fidget, let it get angry, let it get scared, let it get sad. Like, let your body go. We're not meant to hang on to things. Like that's what this session's for. This session is to help you let some shit go. So let it, let it go. Let yourself go. No one's gonna hurt you. No one's, no one's here to hurt you or shame you. You are safe. You are loved. You are protected. And if you can, just let yourself sink into it a little more. Try not to be busy. Try not to be up and doing things right now, if you can. Just let yourself, let yourself be with you. You do so much for others. The body needs a break. And the body needs to release. You got this. The session's going by really quickly. We're actually, we're actually nearing the end. We are in the last chapter of the session. That's how fast an hour goes by. So this is the most important part of the whole session. And please stay the full way, okay? No matter how intense it gets. What's that saying about diamonds? Coals, diamonds under pressure, how they form, whatever it is. Like this is it. This is the part of the session that's the most important part. And it's safe to let go. It's safe to just see it and feel it. And really check in with yourself. Okay, here we go. I'm not gonna talk anymore. This is the breathing. Inhale for three seconds. Exhale for one. Inhale for three seconds. Exhale for one. Inhale for three seconds. Exhale for one. Inhale. Exhale. And I know it's hard to believe, but you are gonna feel like superwoman or Superman right when we're done. You're gonna feel so good. We're just letting that shit go. Breathing in and breathing out. Wherever your body needs that love and support, send three deeper breaths. Let your body know it's safe. You're kicking major booty right now. You're doing amazing. You deserve this. You deserve to feel good. You deserve to be free. You deserve all that is good. You deserve to live the life that you want to create with each breath that you take. You're innocent for living the way that you want to live. You're innocent for doing things your way. You're just doing so good. Keep it going. So right now during this part of the session, my tummy's releasing a lot. It's pretty tight. It's pretty activated. So wherever you are, wherever your body is, the sensations, the symptoms, the feelings, I want you to keep opening up that part of your body, wherever you need it. Wherever there's numbness, tingling, tightness, heaviness, whatever you might be feeling, I want you to just keep opening it up. Don't be afraid of it. That's your body healing yourself. Like that's the breath working. It's going down through the body and then it's lifting up the symptoms to the surface. So you can gently let it go. And you're safe. It's all gonna be okay. It's all gonna be okay. Yeah, and sometimes it's okay. It's, it's hard for people to, unless they've done this a bunch, it's hard for people to like really be like, are you sure it's okay? I'm tingling. Is, are you sure it's okay? My hands are doing this thing. I, I promise, I've been doing this for almost 14 years. Everyone experiences it. You're doing great. And we breathe in and breathe out. Are you sure it's gonna get better? Promise. I'm sure, I'm sure. Inhale. But you gotta find the breath. You gotta keep breathing through it. Like, I can gently guide you, but you gotta be the one that breathes. I can't breathe for you. Like, I can gently guide you, but you gotta be the one that breathes, I can't breathe for you. You gotta do the work. You're doing great. And in these last few moments of your hour, breathe. As you're breathing. Really let yourself connect, like really let yourself sink into your connection. Your essence. Your knowingness. A lot of us have been silenced, or we have had to give our power away for a really long time. So, when you breathe, you can really tap into you. Just you right now, right? And you can really feel your intuition, your knowingness, you can really feel how powerful you really are. And sometimes that scares people. I mean, yeah, it's, my power has scared me for years. And it's taken me a really long time to get here. And so just take three loving deep breaths. And just let yourself connect. Let yourself sink into your body a little more. It's safe to be in your body, it's safe to be here. And as you breathe, you can really feel your knowingness. You can feel. Maybe what, what, what you need right now. What needs to happen, what doesn't need to happen. Or maybe you just need a little more time. And as you breathe, it's just like, all that is, you know, the creator's breathing right into you. All your power, all your strength, it comes from your breath. Not anyone else. We can't get it. From anyone else, you have to get it from within, from you, and that's why we're doing this work. You're doing great. And we inhale. And exhale. We breathe in. And exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. And exhale. And slowing the breath down a little bit more. Inhale, one, two, three, four seconds. Soft exhale. Inhale for one, two, three, four seconds. Soft exhale. And as you breathe in and breathe out. I want you to just hum the vibration that's floating through your body. So just follow my lead, we're gonna inhale. Inhale. Exhale. Bigger inhale. Hum the exhale. Deep inhale. Hum the exhale. And before we close for this evening. Let's check in then with the body, you did such a beautiful job. And take a couple of deep breaths down through the body. Just being real, real and honest with yourself as possible. Okay, repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak. What they really want me to know is. And what's the first thing that comes to you? Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. And actually, let's, let's ask your body one more question. Where, let's invite three deep breaths in through the body, kinda open up your feelings or sensations. And repeat after me. What I really need to let go of is. And speak the first thing that comes to you. And. There may be, be some of you still releasing. So let's just breathe for two more minutes. You're doing great, you did so good. That was not easy to get through, so I wanna tell you. If you made it this far, way to go. No matter what you could do. Tonight was enough, everything you did was enough. Okay, let's just breathe for just a couple more minutes. And someone wrote that. If the feelings or sensation in their body could speak. What they want them to know is. That everything's gonna be okay. Awesome. Thanks, Michelle. And. Again, this takes about ten minutes to pull out of the session. So please kinda hang out. Please hang out, don't, don't leave quite yet. You wanna make sure that you feel. Totally calm and, and good to go before we close the session. I'm gonna put you on mute, I'm gonna use the restroom just real quick, I'll be right back. Please stay just for a few more minutes until we close. Stretch, grab water, keep breathing if you need to, I'll be right back. And please take three deep breaths. To complete. Yeah, just take as much time as you need. I'm gonna be on here for the next fifteen minutes. If you need to go, you're more than welcome to go. There, there are some beautiful messages that come through in this last part, so. Um, there's no rush, like. Most people are still in it right now, so please take your time. Thank you, Cheryl, thanks, Michelle. I do love hearing how people are doing. So if you'd like to leave it in the chat box, if you'd like to unmute yourself. Now's kind of, uh, sharing time. And, um, if you're still releasing, cuz there will be some of you who might be still releasing. Just hang out for a few minutes. The body's still releasing. Okay. Feeling super hot, I feel a lot of tightness in my root chakra still, yeah, okay. So what you can do. Sufik is you can take a three, take three big breaths down into your lower chakra. And you can say out loud, if the tightness in my root chakra could speak. What it's really trying to say is. And then let me know what comes to you. Let me know what you get. Sufik. And thank you for letting me know, yeah, if some, some of you, some, some of you might be feeling really good and amazing and happy, and some of you might still be in it. So if you're still in it, just hang out for a few more minutes, let's. Let's keep sending deeper breaths down into your body, I wanna make sure that you feel. Cool, cool and calm by the time you leave here, it, it won't take long. Thank you, my stomach did get tight, I also yawned a lot, yeah, awesome, thanks Tammy, thanks Maria. I feel happy, awesome Cheryl. Do you mean like you feel hot, like sexy hot, or you feel like hot in the body? Okay, everyone did so good, that was, that wasn't easy to get through. And yawning's good, I can't stop yawning, every few breaths, you yawn a lot, that's great Stephanie, that's not a bad thing. Yeah, okay, and is anyone brave enough to share? Oh Jimmy, look at your flowers, that's so pretty. Would anyone like to share their experience? Or would any, anyone who's new? Anyone can share, we'll just take it one at a time, but, um, is there anyone who? Has never done this before who'd like to share? I wonder who got really, really dizzy, like, oh my gosh, I got vertigo so bad for like ten seconds, it kinda scared me. So just unmute yourself if anyone would like to share.
I'll share, it's Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, I've done breathwork before, but it was more intense and I like how you take it slower. Uh, this time I didn't get the claws, you know? And it was just more gentle and just very calming and peaceful, I did get clarity, I'm, I'm speaking with someone tomorrow on like a. Partnership, and it's been bothering me. And I, I, all of a sudden I got the clarity on it, and I had to take some notes during it a little bit, but I got the clarity, so. I appreciate it.
Yes, love hearing it, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And yes, I do like this type of breathwork, it is very gentle. I don't know how anyone does it any other way, it's just. I like, I prefer this type of breathwork. Um, Tanya writes, that was amazing, first time. I felt numbness, tingling, even had a little anxiety, but very brief, lots of sensations, felt warm as well. Felt cold, okay, and thanks for sharing, Michelle, really appreciate it. Okay, would anyone else like to share? Was that like horrible for anyone? I know it's a lot to get through our symptoms. Um, but hopefully you made it through it. Got so emotional, your calm voice was nurturing, which reminded me of how I need to nurture myself more, awesome. Thank you for sharing that. Before we even started, I was already crying first time, and I love all the feelings. The good and the bad, going through a lot, and it was overwhelming at first, I just took it all in, awesome, Maria, great work. And you know, again, um, some people feel really good after, some people get clarity, some people feel really confused. So if you're feeling confused, or if you don't feel good right now, just, um, just breathe for a couple more minutes. It, it will pass, you, you will get clarity, you, you'll feel much better. And, um, you know, give, give breathwork a few tries. Try it three times, this is some of the most powerful work I've ever, uh, experienced. In my travels and everything I've done, I just, I'm obsessed with it. Like, you don't have to hire a psychic, just lie down and breathe for an hour, and you'll get everything you need. Wonderful Stephanie. Thanks, Chris, thank you Brenda. Clarity on finding a job, it'll all be well, network came up, awesome. And another, another thing to note about breathwork, doing, uh, sixty minutes of breathwork is like having a genie in a bottle. Whatever you need right now. It will come to you, so just watch what happens over the next couple weeks. It is like having a genie in a bottle. Just be open to receiving. Not horrible, but my physical pain. Trying to breathe into it. Some breaths release the pain, but then it come right back. Okay, do you still have pain, Stephanie? If you have pain in your body, what you can do is take a few deep breaths in and just speak out loud. If the pain in my body could speak, what it really wants to say is? And then speak the first thing that comes to you.
Hi, this is Maria.
Hi, Maria.
I just wanted to say thank you. And I don't know why I'm such a crying horrible mess right now, but I did feel everything and the tightness in my stomach, but um I really I'm really thankful that I was able to participate.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Maria. Thank you for sharing. I'm so glad you made it too. Yeah. And if you, if anyone on here still feels like you're releasing, just, just lie down and just take a couple more minutes. Just let yourself cry, let yourself, you know, people get a lot of gratitude tears coming through. Karen writes, I feel amazing. I was so anxious all day. My heart was racing. I feel a release and know my heart is at peace. Awesome. Thank you. Am I saying your name right, Karen? Awesome. How how else? Would anyone else like to share on the live? On the, um, just unmute yourself. I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna upload this and you'll have this session for life. So I'm gonna all email this to you within the next couple hours. And you can use it anytime. So I try to get an hour just because of everything going on in the world. I try to get an hour of breathwork in a week or five to ten minutes a day. But I definitely do the one hour sessions. That's where all, all the shit releases, you know, it just gets out, it gets blasted out of the body. And um, I feel like it's why I'm not in fear at the moment. It really helps you stay out of fear. And it keeps you in that heart space. So you can operate from that, you know, you're from your heart and um, I don't know, I just feel really strong. I would feel really strong through these times. And I know it's because I, the breathing, I know it really helps. Lisa Anne Ri- writes, every time I do breathwork, I feel like I'm releasing years worth of stuff in an hour. So powerful. Yeah. That's why I'm addicted to it. It is. And um, if any of you would like to go deeper, a one-on-one session is like it's a hundred times more, more powerful than this. And this is a, this is a pretty powerful session. So the privates are really, really powerful. If you need to go deeper, just reach out. Okay, I'm so proud of everyone. Is there anyone else? Anyone else would like to share? Did your root chakra, did that help? And um, before everyone goes, you will still be releasing over the next few hours to few days. So try to be really kind and loving on yourself. And um, take your time. Take your time. Eat some good foods. Listen to the body. Just, just really tune into yourself over the next few days. Is the heat the root chakra? Yeah, I don't know. I would, someone was saying, or Sathik was saying that he was having um, root chakra stuff. Yeah, you can, if you, if you're, this will blast open all your chakras. And um, if you feel it, I mean, your, your mind will be, everything will just be blast, you'll feel a, a heat or a warmth or a tingling. Yeah, everyone's body's different, but you will, you will definitely feel something. Okay. Everyone did great. I'll be posting soon when the next breathwork session is. Um, thank you again for sharing with your friends and family. Um, thanks for being here with me. It takes a lot of courage to do these sessions. Because it can take you really, really deep and it can take you all the way back to your, to your womb experience. It can take you as far back as you need to go. So whatever you need to heal or clear, um, just keep, keep at it with the breathwork and um, reach out to me on Instagram. And I love hearing how people are doing after these sessions. And again, give yourself a few days. Um, I hope everyone's feeling good. I hope you're not feeling confused. If you are, just hang out for five, ten minutes on your own. And uh, just wrap yourself up, give yourself a big hug. So, okay, I think that's it, unless someone else would like to share. Everyone did amazing. Okay. All my love. Thanks, everyone. You did great.